Public Meeting Act, New Jersey S.A. 10-4, P.O., N.T. 95, C. 23-1, amended 2006. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of the meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known, the agenda of the meeting, the Asbury Park press code, on January 8th, 2024 via email. Copies of the notice have been also placed at administrative building, bulletin board, district school, Asbury Park Public Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8th of 2024. As a district, we will provide the students with comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse and available global society. Roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Ms. Maxoud?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Present.
Ms. Ricks?
Present.
Mr. Rogers?
Present.
Vice President Grillo?
Present.
President Saunders?
Present.
We have a quorum.
I will now make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a comment. We have young people here to get awards and teachers and staff members. I don't think it's appropriate to have them wait. Our executive sessions are lengthy, and I think they should be given the courtesy of getting their rewards so they can leave if they need to.
I do respect your opinion, but I think that at this point, we need to go into executive session. I don't feel that it's going to be a lengthy executive session. I believe that it's going to be really concise and to the point, and then we can move further.
Could you please say how long the executive session will take? Okay. Just don't wait.
I'm thinking about maybe fifteen, twenty minutes.
At this time, I'll take the roll call since I have a first and a second. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Ms. Maxoud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes.
President Saunders?
Yes.
We have enough to go into closed session at this time.
And it's my understanding that we have presentations tonight? Yes.
Mr. President, if you could ask for, because people are back at coffee, and we can't hear anything, just speak into your mic.
Okay. All right, sorry about that.
Ms. Lizinski, you want to take your mic off? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February Asbury Park Board of Education meeting. We'll do our student and staff presentations for the month. We'll start off with Thirdgood Marshall Elementary School Principal Dr. Schultz, who will also be doing the Asbury Park High School, and then we'll move to the other two schools. We want to thank you, parents and staff, who are being recognized this evening for your patience. There will be continued patience this evening, but initially, we want to recognize our students and staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Thirdgood Marshall Elementary School Student of the Month is a young lady from Ms. Barone and Ms. Homers class that has come to our school recently and is nothing short of a ray of sunshine. She was nominated for this award by four individual staff members, including both of her teachers, Ms. Petrucci and Officer Edmund. All four staff members described her as a student who is willing to work hard, always lend a helping hand, is kind to her classmates, and just really brings a lot of great qualities to our school each and every day. So, joined tonight by her older brother, who is also an Asbury Park student, and her lovely grandmother, Ms. Kaziah Frank. Will you please come up and accept your award? And in true Thirdgood fashion, here's a backpack of your favorite things loaded with art supplies for you. Ready and have Grandma and Big Brother come up, okay? And the three. There you go, sweetheart. Congratulations. And now, for the Thirdgood Marshall Elementary School Staff of the Month. I am so delighted to share the honor of bringing up a teacher who is not new to Asbury Park School District, but new to our Thirdgood Marshall Elementary School. She was nominated by a landslide by her colleagues and described as someone who is always willing to go the extra mile, extremely supportive of her peers and students, implements extreme creativity in her classroom with her bilingual students, and is always, always, always willing to lend a helping hand to do what's right for our students and our school. Joined tonight by her two sons and her husband, Ms. Ursula Malone. Please come up and accept a well-deserved award. Congratulations. I'm so proud of you. These are for you. Absolutely. Yep, come right over. You go. Congratulations. Wonderful. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Have a great night. Yep. High school.
Student of the high school.
Ms. Ajax is going to do Student of the Month.
Mrs. Ajax, if you could come up and do the students first?
Sure.
Prop to comments?
We're good, we're good.
Yeah, you should.
Good evening. I'd like to present the Athlete of the Month for the high school. This is a young man. Oh, sorry. This is a young man, Armando. Armando Herrera. Come on up here, please, Armando. Armando has been a wrestler for three years now. He is a captain of our varsity wrestling team. He is one of our leaders of the school. He is unbelievable. What a great, great kid. Has unbelievable character, a role model for all younger kids, just the best. So, thank you, Armando. Congratulations, dude. Great job, buddy. Good job, brother. And our Student of the Month, I don't believe he is here, but our Student of the Month is Edwin Lopez. Is Edwin here?
No.
No? But we'll accept it on his behalf. Thank you, Edwin. We'll be giving him a gift as well?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to hold on to the gift. Am I doing Staff Member of the Month? Who does? Dr. Schultz has Staff Member of the Month.
This is Bradley. Sorry.
Thank you. Have a good day. Bye-bye now.
See you later.
Okay, I am delighted to present on behalf of Ms. O'Neal, who could not be with us tonight, for the Asbury Park High School Staff of the Month. She has written a very kind and lovely message that I'm going to share on her behalf. We are congratulating Ms. Armonius as Staff Member of the Month for the high school. She has consistently worked hard to make her classroom engaging for her students and has worked alongside Ms. Estrada, Ms. Cobb, and Principal O'Neal to grow as a professional. She continues to seek outside opportunities to learn more about teaching French that she can bring back to Asbury Park. She is one of the first faces to greet students at the breakfast bar each day and shows care for her students in so many ways. And I have also had the privilege of working with Ms. Armonius for translation needs, and she is a wonderful asset to our district. Congratulations. Congratulations, absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Medina for Martin Luther King Junior Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. I'd like to present our Teacher of the Month. Unfortunately, she could not make it tonight, but we will accept it on her behalf. She is a wonderful teacher, hardworking, creative, innovative, an exceptional math teacher, and has really led the promise that our students are ready to achieve in math. So, I'd like to accept this award on behalf of Ms. Casey Miles. So, yep. I'd like to put, I have it, I have it. I'd like to recognize our Student of the Month. He is, he's an exceptional young man. His spirit carries through the halls. It was indicative, or even, you know, tonight, in watching how many people greeted him, congratulated him. It was really remarkable to see, and it's something that we should all aspire to, to reach that many people. So, it is an honor to recognize Joselito Eravu. And I'd like to invite his parents up. This young man, this young man works very hard in the classroom, is a helper to all, and honestly, I cannot ask for a better student. So, congratulations, Joselito.
Congratulations. Ms. Jackson Byers for Bradley Elementary. So, again, I ask for your patience, you know, so, Ms. Jackson Byers?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce the Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, none other than Mr. Mackenzie Paul, second grade student. His teachers are here. We are so proud of all, come on up, Mom. Come on up, Grandma. Come on up, come on up, come on up. Yes, he deserves that. His teachers can come up. His teachers are here. They were here. When I tell you, we are so proud of him today during our awards assembly, he gave, can you give them that little Superman thing that you did today? That's how he did, yes. We are so proud of all of the accomplishments he has made. His teachers just wanted to say something. Mackie's Paul is our second grade Student of the Month. Mackie's is a hardworking student who always tries his best. He is very, always, always very helpful to his teachers and classmates and is always willing to help everybody out. So, this is a little something for you, some spirit for you, and Mom, 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 we would not have him if it weren't for you, so we believe in giving you your flowers. Thank you for blessing us. And where's Grandma? Grandma, you come up here too, because we have called you. Come on up, Grandma. You deserve this moment, yes. Yep, it takes a village. Thank you guys so much.
Ready? One, two.
Unfortunately.
My apologies.
Mackie's Paul, my apologies. At this time, our Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month, unfortunately, she's not here, Lisa Delamonica, but I will accept it in her absence. Thank you.
Again, thank you for, our principals for selecting those students. I would be remiss if we did not recognize that February is Black History Month. It is a month in which we celebrate the recognition of Dr. Carter G. Woodson and the accomplishments of black people in America and black people worldwide. And so, we recognize the accomplishments of our staff in this district as well as in the community. So, with that being said, that ends my presentation. Mr. President.
I'm going to make a motion to go back into executive session. This may take up to an hour, but I'm thinking about forty minutes.
Second.
There was never, there was never a vote on coming out of executive. Not in public. There was no roll call. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
To go back into executive session. Ms. Maxoud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Up.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
You're an exec-
Come out of exec-
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Ms. Maxoud?
Dr. Maxoud, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Present.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
You're an exec-
Come out of exec-
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Ms. Maxoud?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Present.
Mr. Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Grillo?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
I would like to say, first of all, I'm sorry for the delay. We had some matters that we had to attend to. The first thing coming out of this meeting, I would like to make a motion to place Dr. Adams on paid administrative leave effective immediately.
I'll second it.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Ms. Maxoud?
Dr. Maxoud, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Up.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
You're an exec-
Come out of exec-
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
No.
Ms. Maxoud?
Dr. Maxoud, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Before I make my vote, I just got something to say.
Before you say that, could you please, I mean, we will have your time. Mr. President, you need to make order to your room, okay? And ask people to be quiet so that we can hear what is being said. And I'm going to ask Mr. Remy to please speak into your mic, because I want to hear what you have to say. And I'm starting with speaking out of turn. Thank you.
All right. I just feel as though with everything that's been going-
Mr. Remy, this is just a vote at this point.
Yeah, but before I make my vote, I'm going to say what I got to say. Yeah. All right. So, before I say what I got to say, before I make my vote, I'm going to say what I got to say. I feel as though things been very biased off rip from day one. I feel as though he never got a chance to really do what he needed to do. I know certain things happened, but at the same time, he never got a chance to be student-focused, children-centered focused. It's always been on defense mode from day one. And I know certain things may have happened, yada, yada, hearsay, she-say, but I feel as though we're going to waste time and money from our district to make this happen. And I feel as though a lot of people in here only making votes based off who they got in their pocket, or who they, who they friends with. I don't care what y'all say. I sat there with y'all. Y'all done let me get in them rooms. I done sat there, I done heard things, I done, I done, I done been there. I'm the wrong person to let been there. I may have been quiet, but I was in there. And I'm going to tell you this right now, we keep moving forward the way, and I said this before, we keep moving forward the way we are right now, this is about to be ocean regional, Neptune regional. That's where our children about to go. Asbury Park High School is about to be an Asbury Park Riverfront. They already want to get rid of Baines Ave, Barack Obama, to make it into something that they think is going to be housing for our people, but it's not. It's not going to be housing for our people. It's going to be housing for whoever got the money to pay for. But it's not going to be housing for our people. This, this city is not going to be for us. It's not. And I'm telling you, you want to sell, you want to sell something, but you want children to come back later on. How you about to get children to come back later on if you already done sold it? Where they going?
Mr. Remy?
Man.
Can you please not hold up the vote?
Man, listen, this might be my last meeting, keeping a hundred, so I'm going to say everything I need to say right now. I get at the charges, charge me. What y'all going to do? But I'm telling you right now, y'all keep playing into this hand, y'all keep playing into these politics, y'all keep, y'all keep taking a little carrot, the little brown paper bag, watch what's going to happen to y'all. Watch what's going to happen. Watch what's going to happen. I'm going to look at everybody in their face too. Everybody in their eye. Everybody in their eye. Yeah, y'all keep taking that little carrot, taking that little brown paper bag, yeah. Watch what's going to happen. Watch when y'all loses. Don't say I ain't say it. February 22nd, 2024. Don't say I ain't say it. Keep making deals with the devil. Keep dancing with the devil. Watch what's going to happen. I hope y'all could dance. I hope y'all got y'all right shoes on. Can't never dance with the devil. Keep dancing with them. Watch what's going to happen. Y'all keep falling for these little tricks and trades, y'all keep falling for this, watch. I put money on it. I put my bottom dollar. Y'all ain't going to be able to stand, y'all ain't going to be able to weather the storm. So, when we lose everything, don't say I ain't won, y'all. Don't say I ain't say it. And I hope y'all got the right idea. I hope y'all got a great plan to make it, to make what I'm saying right now do not come true. I hope y'all got it. I hope y'all got it. That's all I got to say. And with that, my vote is no.
Ms. Ricks?
I too have a statement. I disagree with the process. There are some board members who knew what was going down, and then there was a couple of us left out of the process. It was like Barbara had mentioned, all these serial meetings. They came in, they knew what they were going to do, they know, knew who they wanted. Even in today, they were meeting like three to three, you know, three people in a huddle and then three more. My whole concern is about the kids. This is not about the kids. This is about who is friends with who and who benefit from who and what place. It's not about these little black and brown kids who are at the lowest of all the kids in the state of New Jersey. What a sad commentary. So, I will say it. Often times when I have something to say, there are certain people on this board who tried to shut me up, but I will not be shut up. I'm for these kids. I have history in this community with my kids, my grandkids, my husband, my husband's family. I've never seen the district this low. I've never seen our kids do so bad. And when these people are in these back rooms making these back deals, these little black and brown kids are not mentioned. So, I object to the process that was put forth tonight and decided even before tonight. I cannot vote because I'm conflicted, so I will recuse myself, but I just want to get that on the record. Be about the education of these kids, not about your friends or your vendors, not about that. This is a sad day, and I can tell you this right now, all kids are going to suffer even worse than they are suffering now. And you hear people saying, what's going on at the middle school? Well, buckle up. Buckle up, saddle up, because it's going to be a rough ride. And I object to the process tonight. I don't think it was a democratic, I know it wasn't a democratic process because it didn't include me. So, I rec, my vote is to recuse myself because I'm conflicted.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Mr. Rogers?
Excuse me. First, I'd like to make a speech that, right now, I have been on this board for a year and a day. And my personal feelings are that we have not focused on what we were supposed to and what this, what this board is supposed to do. I have to look at sometimes, when you look at an observation of what's going on, you have to look internally at ourselves. We are held accountable to this district, to these students, and the first thing we have to recognize is that we need to get them educated and ready for the world. I am recused from making a decision here that is being made, but I hope and I pray that tomorrow, whatever happens, we are pulling up our bootstraps and getting to work on the job that we were elected to do in this community. And as I said always, my, my issues are the children in this community. I have seen what a lack of education does to these black and brown children, and until we, as adults, recognize what our responsibilities are, what our abilities are to do this, they are in desperate need. And open community, communication among everyone and transparency. If anyone has to ask me a question about what I expect, I expect excellence. in the state of New Jersey. What a sad commentary. So, I will say it, oftentimes when I have something to say, there are certain people on this board who tried to shut me up, but I will not be shut up. I'm for these kids. I have history in this community with my kids, my grandkids, my husband, my husband's family. I've never seen the district this low. I've never seen our kids do so bad. And when these people are in these back rooms making these back deals, these little black and brown kids are not mentioned. So I object to the process that was put forth tonight and decided even before tonight. I cannot vote because I'm conflicted, so I will recuse myself, but I just want to get that on the record. Be about the education of these kids, not about your friends or your vendors, not about that. This is a sad day, and I can tell you this right now, our kids are going to suffer even worse than they are suffering now. And you hear people saying, uh, what's going on at the middle school? Well buckle up, buckle up, saddle up, because it's gonna be a rough ride. And I object to the process tonight. I don't think it was a democratic, I know it wasn't a democratic process because it didn't include me. So I re, my vote is to recuse myself because I'm conflicted.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Mr. Rogers?
Excuse me. Um, first, I, I'd like to make a speech that, right now, I have been on this board for a year and a day. And my personal feelings are that we have not focused on what we were supposed to and what this, what this board is supposed to do. I have to look at sometimes, when you look at an observation of what's going on, you have to look internally at ourselves. We are held accountable to this district, to these students, and the first thing we have to recognize is that we need to get them educated and ready for the world. I am recused from making a decision here that is being made, but I hope and I pray that tomorrow, whatever happens, we are pulling up our bootstraps and getting to work on the job that we were elected to do in this community. And as I said always, my, my issues are the children in this community. I have seen what a lack of education does to these black and brown children, and until we as adults recognize what our responsibilities are, what our abilities are to do this, they are in desperate need. And open community, communication among everyone and transparency. If anyone has to ask me a question about what I expect, I expect excellence in everyone's job and responsibility. And that means that there's consequences when they're not. So let's get this together and let's not go back. Tomorrow, decisions are being made every day. We, we look at Congress, they're out on recess and people are dying. We need to focus on our little part of the world and do what we're supposed to do. And I'm gonna hold everybody accountable, and everybody needs to do their job. With that said, I have to recuse myself for many vote, but I had to make that statement. Thank you.
Mr. Grillo? Mr. Saunders?
Announce the vote? I'm not understanding.
Sorry?
I think she wanted to know what the vote tally is, for and against abstain, abstentions.
Five yes, two no, and two recused.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. President, may I make a motion?
Go right ahead.
I would like to move, move to appoint, uh, Mr. Mark Gurbino as acting superintendent and to approve the contract of employment for Mr. Gurbino as acting superintendent, subject to the approval of the county superintendent.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Max, Dr. Maxun?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself.
Can you just, um, respect the other people that are in the room and just be quiet?
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion pass.
I just wanna say, I just wanna say, um, Mr. Gurbino, welcome. I look forward to working with you and so does the board.
I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity. Um, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of healing to do and moving forward, and, um, I'm welcome to that challenge. Thank you.
Ms. Glassman?
The Finance Committee met on February 15th. We received an update on the charter school payments that notwithstanding the board's suggestion that money's not be paid without verification of residency, um, the business administrator was directed to make those payments, uh, so they were made. We have suggested the board will address it in the future to withhold payments for which we don't have residency verification. We did not receive financial information that we had requested for the past five weeks from the administration on revenue and expense tables. We received a minimal presentation on the budget process, and we know only at this point that we are behind schedule in the preparation of the budget, uh, which must be approved at the board's meeting on March 14th. Um, we are still waiting to receive an outline of key priorities and key expense areas for funding or for elimination. We have only three weeks left. We had received a, a copy of the auditor's financial report, uh, but it was given to us 15 minutes before the meeting and it's 300 pages long. It was not discussed at the meeting, it is here tonight for presentation. That's all.
With that, with that being said, we're gonna call up the auditors right now so they can do their presentation.
My name's Robert Mulligan, I am a supervisor with HFA. Um, I'm joined by Brian Waldron, who's one of our partners. Um, I typically like to keep my presentations kind of short and sweet so you guys can get back to your regular business.
Sir, can you, um, can you speak up a little bit? You gotta, you gotta literally eat the microphone, please, thank you.
Is that better? Okay, I can hear myself, so, okay. Um, so, with the audit report, um, the first place I like to point out and start with, at the very beginning of the report, is your letter of transmittal and your M D N A. Uh, these are reports from the management's point of view, so these are unaudited, uh, letters, I'll say, um, but they come from management's point of view, kind of detail the outlook going forward in management's words. Um, we have three opinions within our report, our independent auditor's report, our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, and our independent auditor's report on compliance and internal control, which is over your state and federal grants. All three of those reports, we have unmodified opinions in the report, which is the best opinion that we can give. We had just two significant deficiencies that we wanted to note that the board, uh, we want to make aware, make the board aware of so that they can address them, um, namely that an appraisal, a full appraisal of the board's capital assets be completed, um, to verify that balance and, um, to document the students' enroll report, which is submitted in October each year, um, to just have better documentation of those numbers. In terms of, uh, fund balance this year, um, the district had restricted fund balances of $2.3 million. Uh, this comes from your capital reserve, your maintenance reserve, emergency reserve, and your unemployment reserves. Um, your unassigned fund balance increased about 1.5 million this year to a total of Um, and then finally, um, within our proprietary funds, our food service fund, uh, we saw net income this year for about $195,000, um, so a very good year there. And, um, that would pretty much do it for me. I want to thank Dr. Simmons, Ivy, and their entire staff for all their help throughout the audit. Um, it's a lengthy process, so we really appreciate it. And of course, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Uh, first, can we go through the report? On, on the first couple of pages, it documents that the board, the school board members are on your, on your report. Why, why are the school board members on, on that report?
Well, it just is noting who the board members were as of June 30th, 2023. I, I would say it's mostly informational, um, and just kind of explains who, who is the executive committee essentially of the school board.
Okay, so that, that means that the school board, uh, basically should have oversight on expenditures and issues dealing with the day-to-day operations of the board, the, the district?
I would say that, um, you know, a strong internal control system, that, that the board has some say and oversight over, over all operations of the school district, um, but, I mean, you know, the, the internal controls are, are kind of the district's responsibility and, and, you know, how those are set up and the oversight, I would say, is, you know, kind of to the board's discretion at that point. You know, I, I can't really fully speak to, to your oversight specifically.
Okay, that, uh, so we don't, don't drag this out too long, I do have questions. On the summary audit results, it says material weaknesses, and you, you basically said, no, what, what is material weaknesses?
So a material weakness would basically be, um, a situation where your, your numbers were misstated in a material sense, so, um, an audit looks at materiality, of course, like you can't look at every single transaction over the course of a year. Um, so there are materiality levels to that and, and sampling levels. Um, so material weaknesses would essentially be, you know, a larger deficiency that is materially misstating your financial statements.
Okay, but the next, one of the next lines under that is significant deficiencies, and you said we had those. So when we're looking at, and I'm gonna go to some of the specifics on the, on the, on the budget in the audit, going through, uh, the, uh, application for, uh, for aid to the school, uh, we misrepresented, and is, can you define exactly what, what, what we did wrong? Because I don't want to say misrepresented because they're saying, but we did not correctly state our numbers on issues dealing with our special education, our ESL learners. Uh, can you define, one, what those issues were? Number two, how do we make them better? And three, uh, I don't, were you, were you the gentleman that did the, did the report last year?
I was part, yeah, I was part of the last.
We went, we, 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 we talked about these numbers last year in our audit where we were told we transpose numbers.
Yep.
So when I look at it, I say to myself, do I have a training issue? Do I have a professional knowledge issue? If I can't, if I'm putting out an application that I'm putting out every year and it doesn't actually come up and say what it's supposed to say in my audit, what are my, my issues? So you can go down, explain what it was, uh, why did it happen, and is there a training issue?
I would start by saying, like, in terms of training issues and stuff like that, that that's not really my area of expertise in terms of, you know, how you guys want to train and what you think you need to see. So I, I would kind of say that that in particular wouldn't necessarily come under my scope. This finding in particular, um, what this is, is essentially a documentation issue where, um, you know, like you said, I, I don't want to say numbers were misstated or anything like that. I, I would say we had multiple reports that maybe said a couple different numbers and we had some, uh, you know, difficulty going back and forth just trying to make sure we were coming to the correct numbers and which reports were used as backup. So that, it's really just a documentation thing from our standpoint of, you know, we want to be able to see exactly, um, in one report, here's the documentation of these numbers. So, um, again, you know, I can't speak to the, the training aspect of it, I, I think that's kind of the, the district's discretion, but for, from our standpoint, it's just a documentation thing.
When, when I say training issue, how many school districts do you do this for?
I mean-
I'm sorry, my name is Brian Waldron, I'm one of the partners with Home and Friend Yalison. I was one of the partners, just looked at the quality level of the report, uh, and my other partner, Jerry Conley, couldn't be here tonight. I'm sorry, of course. I'll just hold if that's okay. Yeah, so, it's not good? How about that? No problem, sorry guys. I'll just hold it if that's okay. So again, just to say that, my name is Brian Waldron, I'm one of the partners with Home and Friend Yalison. Uh, just wanted to come tonight with Rob in case there's any questions that I can help answer. So to your question, we do roughly 40 school districts across the state of New Jersey, Monmouth, Ocean County, and across the other counties as well. So this issue at hand, I'm not specifically sure what test we're referring to for the state aid, however, the documentation, the report that you submitted was not substantiated with documentation that balanced to those same numbers. So again, specifically, I'm not sure at this moment we can get back to you on what test specifically, but there's compliance steps that go with that actual application aid that is due on the 15th of October every year for the subsequent year. And that is what we had documented, had internal control differences or discrepancies that led to one of the significant deficiencies.
Can, can, can you say to me that we're paying you as an auditor, would you be able to do, uh, kind of help us if, if you're dealing with 40 schools and the documentation doesn't match up? And how that, how those numbers were coming in, could you go step by step through with our business administrator to say, this person isn't giving us the right numbers, this, this area isn't giving us the right numbers, we see overall general responsibility in our report is the, the business administrator, but I don't think the business administrator deals with the special education and the documentation. Is there, is, is that included in our, in our, in our, in our audit?
So in your, the audit, that, our contract with the audit, right? So we are the auditors outside of the accountant's scope, so if you take those two kind of hats, you have to wear those two hats differently. So certainly as part of the audit, we certainly will guide and make recommendations as we're doing tonight with some of these differences that we might see with the business office. So in the sense of helping and guiding, it's part of our scope of our audit is to do the audit on the financial statements. We certainly do cross some of those, you know, areas to make sure we're doing a little extra work, and we do come out at times and to do the audit and we review the testing that's required to be submitted. However, it's not our audit responsibility to submit those documentation, so we're here to assist as much as we can, but we are here also just to make sure that the proper documentation that is supposed to be filed does get filed. So we're glad to help as much as we need to, to make sure that moving forward, this recommendation gets correctively actioned in the future year, uh, which would be coming up in six months or so when we do the next state aid, uh, application. Uh, but until then, the, the finding that we have here is related to that, that aspect, that it wasn't not submitted, that we could not verify all of the figures that were submitted, therefore what's led us to this problem.
So right now, what, what I'm looking at is we're, we're under the S2 and we're losing money. And I get an audit from my auditor saying we have these difficulties and inefficiencies in our, in our protocol. And one, I don't know how, how, how far it went as to how many students that I'm, I'm missing, what funding I'm missing, what information, because I, I, I gotta get every dollar we're supposed to do for this district.
Yeah, of course.
Would you, if you can't, uh, could you forward to our business administrator and to us a recommendation that maybe a thorough examination needs to be done so we don't have this issue tomorrow?
Excuse me, excuse me. Um, just for clarification, because I think we're going down the wrong assumption here. Um, the issue that they, they found, part of the recommendation and is in the, um, the agenda is the corrective action. Um, I wasn't here when that issue was found, that was on last year's, um, ASSA, and this year I supervise the ASSA, myself and, um, Mr. Paul Savoye worked together to make sure that we got the right information recorded, we worked with special education, and every principal, make sure every teacher signed off and every child. We gave them training prior to that to make sure that they understood the process, and that was done. So that we, this year, even before we got the audit findings, had already worked on the remedy to, to, um, put in place the proper procedures that needed to be done in order to remedy that. In addition to that, the other two findings, the corrective action for that was also there, also those corrective actions, and we put in place those remedies to ensure that those, um, findings would not be repeated going forward.
So, yes, I do apologize. The, the state, so the application for state aid, the way that works, it is done in the previous October for your next upcoming year. So the comment that we are talking about in the 630, 2023 audit would have been from your October 2022's state-
Oh yeah, no, no, I-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so clarify-
I, I agree, right now, we're, we're, we're getting this, uh, from Dr. Simmons, uh, on the tail end, and my, my question is the same questions I had in there, were training issues? So we did have training issues, and right now-
We had training and documentation issues, and those were remedied when I worked with Mr. Savoye in order to make sure that we had the proper, um, information in place. And that also went hand in hand with also our charter school, um, verification. So all of that came from putting in place the, um, the procedures and processes that needed to happen, and we did, uh, also do the proper training. As a matter of fact, on the training day that I believe was November, Mr. Savoye and myself, we presented to the staff in regards to how they should go into the system and how they should be recording the student information so that the proper information was recorded for a student, if they had special ed, special education, I E P designations, that that was done properly so that we was, um, ensured that those numbers were correct. In addition to that, Ms.- In addition to that, Ms. Lau worked with us to make sure that all the students that she had on her register was properly recorded, so that we was sure that we was putting the right designations, that the staff knew how to do that, and that everybody across the board was properly putting information about students into our student database.
Okay. My other situations, because, you know, since we made these changes, I want to make everything transparent, and I want to ask, right now, these trainings, these issues are being addressed as we go on, are they policy issues that we need to update? Are there training materials that it would be good that you kind of summarize some of the stuff for the board as to actually these remedies that were done? And so, we can make sure that we're going to the next budget year where we need to be, because this is going to be a very, very, very tough, and I'm gonna say that another very tough academic year for funding for this district. And also, the next, the other thing that you found, the appraisal, so, well, that's been remedied, you already set up a...
Yeah, we have the contract with, usually you districts contract with appraisal team or inventory consultant to come in and count the assets of the district that had not been done in this district for over 10 years. So, I will be working on bringing in that type of service in order to do those counts, so that the depreciation and the updates on the assets are done, so they have the reports they need in order to properly represent the districts and the financial status of our assets.
Is that, is that gonna be done before the next audit?
Yep, June 30th.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's continue with our committee chairs. Mr. Remy? Mr. Penna?
The Policy Committee met on the 15th, and we discussed some things that were discussed right now that are on the agenda, that were recommended by the federal audit and taking effect this evening that need to be changed.
I have one question, Mr. Penna. One of the issues on, was grievances. Is that, was that state mandated, or was that local?
That was local, and the changes, yeah, that was local. The four that you saw on the, yeah, and that was in the notes, that's what it indicated, that's what we talked about. The four that you saw indicated, it was on the agenda that stated it, that these were four from the federal audit, and the other one on the grievances, and the letters were given out, highlighted in yellow regarding the superintendent installing the process for the reporting of grievances to the board, and that was the change.
So, yeah, so it's a local. I think we should look at that clearly when we're looking at a lot of these things going on.
Mr. President, I got something to say. I forgot. As regards athletics, I just don't want to, what happened last year to happen this year, so, and in terms of head football coach and spring sports are coming up as well, March 1st, we still don't have any coaches for these positions. So, we need to get...
Just signed documents for coaches. That's what, that was part of the signature process, am I correct?
What, applications or applicants, or what? Do you have people that are applied for the positions? Are we interviewing? I can't hear you.
It's agreement with people.
For what position, though?
We have assistant wrestling coaches, we have cheerleading coaches, we have indoor track coaches, you know, have a whole...
All right, I'm just making sure. How about football?
Yeah, I believe that's...
Can't wait to, you know, to June...
Oh, no, 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 I don't think that's happening right now.
To Mr. Remy's point, last year, we did seem to have some anguish as to how early other teams went out. Can that be, well, that goes to the athletic committee, but we need to readdress, to address that and make sure we get it out earlier?
Yeah, I know, me and Ms. Brown, we tried to work on that, to get everything out early. I don't know what happened, but it should be, everything should be out sooner than how it used to be. We should be applying or interviewing throughout the year, or renegotiating, or rehiring, whatever we have to do, as soon as the season is over, so we don't have to wait, or retrain, or anything like that, or get people, you know, used to the community, walk the hallways, things like that. But, yeah, I just wanted to bring that, so, thank you.
Mr. Remy, if, I believe I'm on the athletic committee, am I? If I am...
Yeah, I didn't make it last meeting, that's why I asked. I didn't see it in the notes either.
If we need to have, if we need to have a special meeting, you can reach out to me. Whatever we need to do to expedite...
Copy that.
Listen. Let's come in, let's continue with the committee chairs. Mr. Grelle?
So, I attended the Buildings and Grounds meeting. If, if it's okay with Mr. Remy, I know you're the chair, but you couldn't make it to the last one, so I have the minutes, that's all right. So, myself, Ms. Glassman, Mr. Rogers, Dr. Simmons, and Ms. Brown met to discuss some of the important issues having to do with buildings and grounds. One was procedures related for the sale of the maintenance building, and a memo was provided to Mr. Weiss, and it was also sent to Ms. Glassman and Dr. Simmons. And there was, basically, the step, the steps needed in order to sell that building. There were some project considerations for the 24-25 budget that totaled $1,004,67,399. Security costs are to be added. That includes things like district vehicles, generator replacement for Bradley School, generator replacement for Thurgood Controls, BMS Controls for the high school and Thurgood rooftop units that weren't replaced from the ESER funds that we had as funds run out. Then there's obviously grounds repairs, there's exterior panic gates that are in need of replacement and repair due to vandalism. There is a fire alarm replacement in Thurgood, security cameras, security radios, and panic doors that are needed at the high school and the middle school to enhance security and to limit the unauthorized access to the buildings. The board members did share, the board members that attended did share their desire to review once again the options for the Obama Building, since new board members have come on board, and they didn't have the information presented last year. And, Dr. Simmons, thank you for indicating that you work with the architect to kind of get everybody up to speed and see if there are any questions in terms of options or things like that. Also, Mr. Rogers mentioned the P3 program and asked Dr. Simmons to look into the funding options. I did see a few emails back and forth, I'm not sure if we got a final kind of definitive answer to it, right? It's kind of to be continued?
Yeah, we're still gonna...
Yeah, it's to be continued. They did respond and said that they, that area was not responsible for that any longer, and they had, for lack of a better word, phoned the information out to specific vendors. So, you'd have to work with a vendor and make a presentation through a vendor. They did say that, that most of those projects start at $75 million, which is a lot, a little bit above what we would be looking for.
Little bit.
So, it appeared that it was one big project...
Right.
For bigger, you know, for huge processes. And they did say that there's a very large amount of money that the district would be responsible for. So, right now, you know, I'll definitely look for one of those vendors to get more information, like I said, and see what options it is, but right now, that was as far as they gave us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, let me, this is one of the trainings I got at the league, and why P3 is so important? It's a public partnership with an entity that could allow us to retain ownership of the property if we do do something. So, I know those are issues that a lot of the community has been concerned of, of keeping that piece of property, but doing whatever we need to do to take advantage of opportunities for income, to take advantage of opportunities to expand, you know, whatever we can do. And they have done projects in the state, more with colleges, but they're trying to, it looks like they're trying to move down to the school district, so that's why the legislation is there. So, us finding out some vendors that might have the opportunity to want to talk to us and actually front some of the costs to do the research on this project.
Okay, great. And then, finally, we had a conversation, discussion on the tennis courts that the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative is offered to pay for, essentially, and this is something that's been going on for quite a while now. But, we did receive an update on the timeline to complete construction, as the funds must be spent by this June 1st. So, Dr. Simmons, you spoke with the architect, and we're gonna start the process of kind of getting everything started. I know that, it's come to my attention that there's a couple of documents that need to be signed by the business administrator and also the board president. I don't, I don't think I saw them in here, but if it's possible that...
Yeah, the email indicated that I needed to sign them, so those will be expedited and gotten to...
Okay, great.
Back to the architect. She's looking for some authorization signatures.
And, so, I have a question about what we've voted on in terms of resolution so far. Do we need to make, so do we need to authorize our architect to make the submission to the DOE on behalf of the district? Do we need to do anything like that?
So, you're not at that point yet. So, right now, you've authorized the contract for the architects to start the work. Once they produce all of the documentation that is needed, is at that point that you as a board would sign those papers, and that will be submitted. And also, whatever documentation that's needed for the contract, for the people to do the work, will also come to you as a board to approve it, because it's over the bid threshold, so you'll approve it at that time. By authorizing the architect to move forward, you've started the process.
Okay, great. And we're looking for a vendor that...
We're trying not to go out to bid, we're looking for a vendor under a co-op, so that the process is expedited and moves a lot faster.
Okay, great. And I just saw through the email threads that they had mentioned a specific vendor, Field something, or Field Turf USA, or something like that. So, but I figured that's part of kind of getting everything in motion, so, all right. Thank you so much. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thanks. Now, with the public participation, in accordance with the Board Policy 0167, in accordance with the Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public commitment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provide members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters and community interests. The public commitment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer or provide his and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if acceptable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow foregoing rules and interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed.
Good evening. John Napolitani, President of the Asbury Park Education Association. Come here tonight to say to this board, thank you for finally listening to multiple surveys, votes of no confidence. It's been an ugly two and a half years. And if anybody up on the dais actually thinks that I enjoyed this, you are sadly mistaken, because I liked it when we had peace with the former superintendents, both of them. I had a great working relationship with them, and would have had a good one here, too. I want to assure this board president, vice president, and the rest of the board members that I, as president of this association, will work in tandem with Mark Gerbino, as a guy that I've known for many years, who has strong labor management relations that he's always had. We do not always agree. We get mad at each other. We don't talk at times, but at the end of the day, we both know what's right for this school district. I assure you, he's got the time in this school system that I do, and I promised the county executive superintendent multiple times that if a change were to occur, I will work with that person. I assure you, on behalf of my staff, we're here to support you, and we will do everything we can. Thank you. One last thing. Don't ever accuse board members, public officials, of wrongdoing with taking a paper bag. I take offense to that. If you're talking about an endorsement, sir...
Mr. Napolitani, just direct it to me.
We're talking about an endorsement...
Take it how you feel.
You took an endorsement, and went against what the choice was. Somebody else did not take an endorsement and went with the group, so it doesn't really matter. What I'm saying is, don't make this a...
Director comments to me.
I said what I said.
Thank you, have a good night.
Feel how you feel, I said what I said. Feel how you feel. I hope you and your minions enjoy it.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, resident, right, parent, former board member. I've just seen all of this before. I done been down this path before. I'm crying to myself, because I seen it before, and I know what's coming, because I said it 10 years ago. I lived it 30 years ago as a student, in the same buildings, looks the same way. Great salaries for great people, but our kids still don't have books, there's still no books in the library, there are no computers. We've had districts in fights, in internal fights, and all kinds of things that, again, is a distraction, right? A distraction is the long game, there's certain constant things that are happening, that continue to happen. It doesn't matter, I have nothing against Kabina, I don't care either other way, but I know the plan of the district. I've seen the plan that is coming, and y'all play a part in it. I'm gonna tell every one of you, because I can say it, your names will go down with the death of the district. And not, when we talk about death, I'm also talking about the fact that Obama School is encapsulated asbestos. You cannot even drill in the building. If you go too touch, too build, too construct, unless you tarp the neighborhood, you kill generations of people. The grounds of the neighborhood will be dirty forever. Our kids will walk away with sickness, our parents, forever. So, when we talk about these things, and again, they're not yours to sell. They're our kids, they're our community, our history. There's Dr. West that worked in that building for generations that talk about the thousands and thousands of dollars of artwork that are inside that just sit there. Ask somebody from here. When you get up and see a plan walk out, when I sat on the board, it was an agenda, I damn right had an agenda when I came to work here in this district as a board member, is to save my district, save my children, and the fact that I was the only one who had a parent, was a child that had a child in the district. He went through, as I did. There is death in your decisions that y'all think are popular. And when you talk about brown bags, I can say, I seen it. I understand the deals on top of deals on top... I understand the deals on top of deals on top of deals. I understand the manipulations of people's egos. I understand and I see it. Put me on it if you want to firsthand, because I can speak on things, because I wasn't part, but I seen it.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Maureen Casey, 1670 West Princeton Avenue, Brick, New Jersey, retired speech therapist of Bradley Elementary School in the Asbury Park School District. I am proud, I am proud right now that you have all spoken up and gotten someone who is going to look out for the students. 38 years ago, I started here, and Barack Obama, Bangs Avenue School was supposed to come down. I sat on the committee to take it down, to build bigger and better. I was here. I wanted what was better for every child in this town. It didn't matter what color I was. It didn't matter what color they were. I wanted what was better for students. Special ed, regular ed, it didn't matter. I wanted, we had biddy basketball, we had homework center, I started homework center. I sat here every day and made sure everyone's homework was done. Mr. Gerbino made sure everybody had athletic equipment. Even Ms. Lozinski made sure her athletics was in order. She was on top of things, she was at every game. Get back there. Find it. Find what was here 38 years ago when I walked through these doors. Find it, because every student here deserves what I offered them 38 years ago. And my colleagues who are still here, who aren't tired, who had to go home to their own children. I was never blessed with any. These were mine. These children were mine. And they still are, and that's why I'm still here, three years retired. And the special ed kids need more services, the COVID. Think about it. Give them what they need, and stop fighting. You're all so intelligent, and you all love children. And we all used to get along, and we all worked together. I don't know some of you, I haven't worked with some of you, but the majority of you I have. And I just want our children to get what they deserve. You're good people, and you know what they need. They need love and support and an education. And Mr. Gerbino, and Parma, and Drake, you all know what they need. Please give it to them. Joe, like, do it. Let's do it this time.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Arba Council. My address is 302 Third Avenue, Asbury Park. And I'm up here to talk about my son, Amari Hellman. I care about his education, and right now, his education is not being met by this district. His IEP is being violated in so many ways. When the new, the new schedule was inputted, he did not have reading. And it's in his IEP to have reading every day. He only gets reading on B day. He needed every day. Because if you can't read, you can't do a math problem. You can't do numbers. So, I'm asking, next time when the schedule is implemented, please put reading on his schedule. If it's not, I will do due process on the district. And I don't want to do that. Because everyone sitting here said they're for our kids. And I went to school here 25 years ago. And it was not, not like this. Everyone that sat at this table cared about the kids in this district. No one cares. The middle school is a hellhole. What I mean hellhole, kids walk around all day, do nothing. My son is part of it. Nothing. The principal does nothing. I went to have a meeting at my son's school, I seen this two same girls walk the hallway. He was the principal, in the office. When Dr. Lewis was at the middle school, he never sat in his office, never, ever. He came upstairs and looked in the hallways, looked in the hallways, in the classrooms, and see what was going on. The principal does nothing. It's a hellhole at the middle school. I'm taking my son out of there. Because his academics is not being met. You don't have a library. How do you expect kids to research a paper? If they can't read, they can't use the computer. It's sad. I went to the middle school on Tuesday. I looked around, it's supposed to be a media center. Who had the computers? The wall is bare like this. Read the books. It's sad. This district is sad. I used to love to say I was part of Asbury Park School District. Now, when people talk about it, I turn my head. I graduated 25 years ago. 25 years ago. Please get it together for our babies.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, but, Edley Victorin, I think I was supposed to say my name, Union, New Jersey, speech therapist in the district. A lot of what I have experienced in my six years here, and a lot of what I've experienced tonight, the only message, the only thing I can say to all of us, everyone sitting at this table, is that, everyone says we're here for the kids, right? But sometimes our actions don't match our words. We're here for the kids. So that means you show up, even when you don't want to. That means you have conversations, even when you don't want to. That means you make hard decisions, even when you don't want to. More and more of my students can't even read. We have teachers who are trained in Wilson, don't have the Wilson program here in this And how am I, as a speech therapist, I'm starting with little kids to high school students who can't even read? What are we even talking about? Our kids can't even read. So all this infighting, I don't care about it. Because at the end of the day, I can't even do my job. So if we're about the kids, let's come to the table and be about the kids. Because we're failing them. We, myself included, we are failing them. So while we sit here and we fight, they're failing. So, let's move forward, because I don't care who's in the seat. And let's be for these kids. Let's show up. And I believe in the power of the people. So some of the stuff we're talking about, power of the people can change some of this gentrification, some, some things that I'm seeing also. A teacher said to me today, "Oh, you're so happy today." I said, "Because when you can't find the light, sometimes you have to be the light." So right now, it's very low, but it's up to each and every one of us to be that light. Let's pay it forward.
Is there any other comments? At this time, I'm closing the open public session. Now we're looking at our monthly HR being report.
Good evening, everyone. Given the data from the Department of Student Services for the month of February, there were two alleged HIBs. One was founded, the other unfounded. The founded HIB resulted in restitution and restoration and other consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is state monitor report.
Just for the purposes of keeping it brief, I'm trying to focus my time on your budget development and your budget development process. Had the opportunity to sit in meetings with some of your departments and your schools, analyze your data, but that's trying to be, my focus is to get you on solid footing for next year.
Thank you. Okay, now let's move to acceptance of minutes of last month.
Mr. President, I think there's a couple of minutes that we need to accept. There's the minutes from December 14th, January 4th, and then January 25th.
Okay.
Because you have some board members that weren't on the board in December, so I'd suggest you don't take them separately.
Okay. Let's start with the December, where is it, where is it? Let's start with the acceptance of the December 14th minutes.
These are for approval of the closed session minutes for the 7th 14th. Ms. Glassman?
Approved.
Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Maxud? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
I'm happily abstaining on this one, because that was when I was absent due to the birth of my daughter.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yes. We're now looking at the January 4th meeting, the closed session, as well as the organization meeting.
President Saunders, may I, may I suggest that we move 12B through F to make it more efficient? And I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay, this is for all the remaining minutes. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Maxud?
Abstained.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now we're looking at agenda items B1. I'm asking for a consent agenda to B5.
I'll move it.
It's the, it's the cream, right? So let's see, we're not doing all the green? Oh, the pages. Okay, gotcha. So those are pages B1 through B5. That includes items 1 through 11, and then the addendum 1 through 4.
There were some of these that I would move to table.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. You'll have to vote.
There's a motion and a second. So to the extent anybody wants to withdraw the motion. Otherwise, vote this up or down, and then we vote to leave. So there's a motion on the floor which is not going to be withdrawn. So this motion is going to be voted up or down.
Ms. Glassman?
No.
Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Maxud?
No.
Dr. Penna?
No.
Mr. Rogers? Mr. Grillo?
This is for everything, right, on B?
Yeah, and you could, you could say no on some and yes on others. And if this goes down, then nothing happens. Nobody gets hired, nothing happens.
So we just re-vote it?
No, you can change your vote right now if you want, so that some business can be done.
All right. Go ahead.
Can I go back? I'm sorry.
I'll start again, how we do that?
Read you.
Ms. Glassman?
Okay, so I guess the easiest way to do this is, yes on 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, no on 1F, yes on 2, yes on 3, yes on 4, yes on 5, yes on 6, yes on 9, yes on 10, and yes on 11.
I'm sorry, I just...
Did I go too far?
Did you, you voted no on F, the homeless liaison, is that what you said?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Maxud? And that's, and...
That's it.
Yes on everything else?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Penna?
Yes on everything but abstain from, on B3, 7, and 8.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes on everything.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
B3, 7, and 8. And yes to everything else.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'm sorry. B5, uh, the first, well, no, it's the first. Oh, B5, number 2, A, uh, no.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Saunders?
Yes on everything except for B3, 7, and 8.
Yes on everything except for B3, 7, and 8.
Excuse me, Dr. Simmons. Just to be sure that you recorded my vote, 7 and 8 was not a yes. When I skipped over B3, I skipped, B3 number 7 and 8 were the two, I said, I did not approve.
Got it.
Dr. Simmons?
It appears that B7 and 8 has been voted down. Yeah. And, and that appears to be all. But I do have a question. I know some personnel has to be 5 or more, so...
I don't know if a job description is a personnel action, is it? I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What do you have on the votes?
The one, well...
It's just, it's a standard vote, so you just see 5.
Okay. So yes, so that means that B7 and 8 has been voted down as a no. And that's it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to continue with your business agenda?
I'd like to place on the table section C, items 1 through, actually, 1 through 8. And the agenda, the addendum items 1 and 2.
I'll move it.
Second.
I'm who, second? Dr. Penna? Okay, thank you.
I have two questions.
Sure.
I saw on the bills that there's a payment to College Achieve. Have they verified the 250 students that they say live in our district yet? I mean, I know that was due in October, and I know we've had some problem getting documentation.
No, they have not. We had a meeting and I was directed to release the payment. They indicated they would work to get all the students verified, and maybe we've had a dozen parents come in of the 250.
So they start...
I did say at that meeting that if they did not adhere to it by the end of February, that we would go back to withholding the payment.
Okay, this question. The second question is, could you just explain the ESER transfers to transportation? I know we're required to do some transportation this year, correct?
Yes. So the ESER transfers was last year, this is as of June 30th, there was transfers, as you know, as the board, monies were low. So some of the monies were used and transferred into the charter school account in order to cover all the costs due to the reduction of state aid. And also, some of the monies went to the transportation. Transportation costs had been increased, and we were over the budget there. So those were also transferred in order to meet the needs of the district. The transfer was about 5.2 million. And since it was technically as of June 30th, but after the June 30th date, it was the closing of the books, that's why that transfer didn't get captured in the June transfers. So that's why we're coming to you now.
And the transportation covers just generally what? Just so...
Transportation is all students in the district. All students, not, let me say this, all students that live in Asbury Park. Our transportation is in three different areas. We have preschool, we have special education, and we have charter schools. Those are the children that are transported throughout the district.
And one of the reasons for the increase, the preschool, we can't transfer anymore out of the preschool, correct?
Correct.
And that was, how much, that's a lot of money.
That's over a million dollars that we had to assume. The pre-K funding said that that would not any longer be included in our transportation. And as we know, you know, in order to get the children there, especially thorough good and with the railroad, it's only prudent to transport those children. So that is something that, even though the state considers that as courtesy, we consider it as a necessity.
And the, just one more question, the charter school transportation, how much does that cost us? Do you know that?
That's also over a million.
All right, thank you.
A follow-up on that question about transportation was, is, is the transportation cost of those children, was that allowed a couple of years ago?
Yes, the preschool aid prior to, the year before, had allowed for transportation costs. They made the decision based on the fact that they felt that the numbers should be included in transportation aid, which is nowhere close to even covering some of transportation. And that's the, that's the only way they would cover it. And that's where we would include those children, since that wasn't, since that's not the case and it's considered, so they also have to be two miles away. We don't have that, we don't have, we don't, most of the children don't make that limit. Asbury Park is not a, you know, it's not a two mile plus.
No, we're walking.
Exactly, you're a walking district. You do have hazardous routes, but you're a walking district. So because of that, the state will not cover any more transportation costs.
Can you, can you, when you get a chance, send me some literature on that, on that change, so I can, when we're talking to state on issues of funding, I want to be able to bring this stuff up? Because we do have hazardous districts, who are not like most other districts, and also the working poor and all the other essentials that need to go in. So can you send that to me, so I can make sure I have that?
I will.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the professional development summary. It's more just, like, because I'm, as a, like a layperson, what's IXL Live for administrators? Is it, like, what's the difference between that and just IXL?
What page is that?
Some raw page.
Well, it's the PD summary by month, so it's C6. It's way, way down. I think it's the last page on the attachments. But you have 1, 2, 3, 4 staff members that they will be doing IXL Live for administrators.
Yes, that was on the 7th. Yes, they're going on the 7th. There's a live training for IXL, which is our high school, how do you call it, program that we use for self-paced program, kind of like iReddy. But we have it for the high school. And so those are the administrators that are going to go to that training.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Yeah, because I know what IXL is, I just didn't understand how the administrators had to...
Because it's, that one's in person, that's what I think the live part means.
Any more questions?
I have one question. I, I can't find the entry now. I'd seen it earlier. There's a sort of large charge for business marketing, and I can't find it here now, but somewhere in this...
Is it on the business?
And I didn't understand what it represents.
16,000?
Yeah, 16,000.
Pages on?
Can you give us the page?
Look at the bottom.
It's the vendor?
Yeah, I think it's the vendor payment.
C1A, it's at the top, first page it looks like. Uh, yeah.
It's the first white...
First page.
The NRG business? That one?
Oh, gas, trans, guest gas.
That's our gas services. You know how we pay New Jersey Natural Gas?
Why is it called business marketing?
That's the name of the business. That's the name to remit to, but it is NJR, like New Jersey Natural Gas.
If you look at the description, it's...
It just didn't make sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll take the call, roll call now, Ms. Glassman?
Yes, except for College Achieve.
Ms. Zinski?
Yes, except for College Achieve.
Dr. Maxud?
Abstain.
Dr. Penna?
Yes, except for College Achieve.
Mr., oh, sorry. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, except for College Achieve.
Mr. Grillo?
Pay 'em all, except for College Achieve.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, except for College Achieve.
Just for clarity, that went out already, so it will be the next payment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't give them any more. Not one cent.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Have a good night.